Order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call. Rick Claypool.
Here.
Emily Sayers.
Here.
Sarah Freilich.
Here.
And Score here, Laura Cardosi here, if you'd like. And then we have minutes from August 11th. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And you have, um, on page one, under number three for municipal order number 13, I wanted to add a sentence, I want to be clear that I went back to the meeting recording and checked this, but I want to add that right before, right between where it says Ms. Cardosi and Ms. Freilich, with our line down, I'm going to add a sentence that says, Ms. Freilich asked if this was a renewal, Mayor Zenbro said yes. And, one second, let me read my notes. Okay, and then, actually, I'm sorry, I have it in the wrong place. That would go, actually, between where it says Attorney Braun and a motion to approve. And then between Ms. Cardosi and Ms. Freilich, I want to add a line that says that Ms. Freilich inquired about who the representative alternate are. Mayor Zenbro said the mayors are supposed to be there. Ready? Say one more. On page three, under Public Works, almost at the bottom, the second to last paragraph of Public Works where it says Ms. Freilich mentioned, I want to change this, I'm not too big on this, but like it could either be big center hump to speed cushion, because we did correct that in the conversation, which is temporary, but I want to add, let's see, which is temporary, OTR, after OTR, in a sentence where it says, perhaps he could check it out if interested. I want to clarify that this was, I actually was direct, I don't think I said this, but I was directing it to Mr. Elkins rather than Dan. Do you remember that, Steve?
No, we were exact.
But the temporary speed cushion.
I thought Dan was going to check it out, so I could be wrong.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it all exists.
I did email you about it. I'm sure. So maybe don't ask, since it's unclear.
Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Ms. Sayers.
Yes.
Ms. Freilich.
Yes.
Ms. Score.
Yes.
Ms. Cardosi.
Yes.
Mr. Elkins.
Yes.
And I need a motion for August 18th, minutes.
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry. I'll make a motion.
I'll say. There's a spelling of social in the last line, special, not social, special meeting.
Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Ms. Sayers.
Yes.
Ms. Freilich.
Yes.
Ms. Score.
Yes.
Ms. Cardosi.
Yes.
Mr. Elkins.
Yes.
We have a petitioner, Mr. Mike Fox from Montague Road. If you want to get up and speak at the mic there and... Don't hit your head on the ground.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Fox. I've been at that residence since 1979. In those 46 years, I've been to council several times, usually with the same complaint. And that is that the Montague Road is a steep hill and it is not being enforced. The speed limit is 15 miles an hour adjacent to the park and people continue coming down that road at freeway speeds. Not too long ago, my neighbor, Paul Lembright, was T-boned coming out of his driveway. There's a bright blind curb at the top of the hill, but before that curve, there's a stop sign, another sign that says speed limit 15 miles an hour, but you can't see the driveway. So when my neighbor got T-boned, there was an officer responded and he estimated from the skid marks before he was hit, that the kid driving at his car that hit him was estimated speed of almost 60 miles an hour. Now, that's not unusual. On that road, I would be surprised if anyone is doing less than 30 or 40 miles an hour. Now, in the past, I've asked for some relief about this problem. I've not seen any solutions to it. Only once in 46 years have I seen a policeman on that road handing out tickets. He was parked at the end of the street with a radar gun and I was shocked and delighted to see him there, so I went down to talk with him, but he didn't have time to talk with me because he was too busy handing out tickets. Now, it's my understanding that if you're doing 60 in a 15, that the fine is pretty stiff, plus possibly a hearing, a suspended license, points on your license, and maybe even jail time if it's considered reckless driving. Maybe the chief can tell me if I'm wrong about that. So we have a lot of scoff laws that are pushing the envelope there because Montague is a little bit like international law. International law is whatever you can get away with. And so I'm ruled by international law because none of these people are being fined or stopped or disciplined. Just last week, I was backing out of my driveway. I have a snood device in my car called a backup camera. I could see all the way to the top of the hill, a good 200 yards at least, there's nothing there. So I backed out of my driveway onto the street and stopped, put the car on gear, and at that point, something blew by me so fast, he had to swerve to go around me, and he had to swerve again to avoid a head-on with a guy coming up the street. This kind of thing is not unusual for people living on that hill. And I have asked this council in the past to figure out what to do about that, and so far, I don't see that you've been able to come up with a solution. Now, I notice across the street, about 100 feet from here, there's a thing called a radar sign. I don't know why you put it there. You don't have a problem there. I don't know if the people from the garden club had their shorts in a twist because people were breaking along, or they were having trouble, you know, doing their gardening or whatever, but I can tell you, I don't have a radar sign down the hill, and I kind of wish I did. If that radar sign is not being put to good use, I'd be happy to have it in front of my house. If you can't do that, then perhaps you could fund one. Now, I've looked online and Mr. Google tells me a radar sign averages between $3,000 and $5,000, depending on its configuration, its power supply, and what features it presents. All of them do those statistical analysis. They will tell you how fast the average car is traveling, the minimum and the maximum velocity, arrange it into bins according to whatever parameters you set, and you can map each street using this sign and figure out where you need to allocate your limited police resources to stop it. I would be willing to pay for half the cost of a new radar sign on that street if the city would agree to install it. It doesn't have to be there permanently. These things can be moved around. They can be fitted on a U-channel post, nailed to a telephone pole. They can even be put on a dolly so you can move it. They are sometimes solar powered, sometimes battery powered, sometimes hardwired, or maybe a combination of those things. So that is my solution to you, to stop these scoff laws that radar signs act like a dead policeman. I think that's the colloquial expression. People slow down. I've asked for speed bumps, I'm told that can't be done. And so I'd like you to possibly budget a radar sign for that street. If you do not have the funds for a radar sign for that street, even if I pay for half of it, then we can discuss me paying all of it. I would be willing to buy a radar sign within reasonable, you know, within these limits of what the average radar sign costs, and the city would be required to maintain it and collect the data. And that's my solution, because you have not come up with one. So I'd be curious as to what you think about that. You can discuss it. Yes, Ms. Score?
Mr. Rock, I just want to, I want to support you in your remarks there. After, it's a dangerous street. I completely agree with you about installing radar signs. And Chief Cody, is that something where we need a solar-powered sign?
I'd like to see the location where it's at.
Most are, what we do have, we have two already, and maybe we can move one to Montague.
It's a very, it's a very long street, okay? And we installed a stop sign there, trying to slow traffic down.
In 2013.
At Hayden's less speed ride in what, you're counting?
In 2013.
In 2013. But it's not particularly effective. It stops people and then they just accelerate again. And I've stood there and watched and a lot of people blow that stop sign. The reason we canceled speed bumps in is that half the street is ours and half's public, and they just don't want...
I understand that.
Well, we can put radar signs on that street, and you may need to employ one or one. It is a very long street. I walk it twice a day, every day. There's a tremendous amount of traffic there. Most of it is probably non-local traffic. I mean, is it non-local? How about the guy who did the T-bone? Was he cited for that?
What's that?
The guy who ran into your neighbor, was he cited?
My neighbor was cited because he pulled out from a car. The thing is, he could not react. Coming around that, that curve, and it's only like, less than 50 yards. And you're suddenly there, unless you actually post somebody on the... Make sure it's clear. There's nothing he can do. Now, the guy coming down, doing 60 miles an hour at his driveway, is going to be doing 70 or an 80 by the time he gets to my driveway. If they're, because gravity acts on that.
I don't even know the problem on Montague, because I usually cross over there, like recommend to you, Montague, they're flying. Even uphill, right, uphill, they are flying. So I know we can't put it on the public side, although maybe you could talk to them and maybe they would...
So I have some questions. When did this accident happen?
The accident, well, it was probably two years ago.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, by experience, you can't cite somebody for a traffic violation unless it's a DUI, unless you observed it. So I wouldn't be...
No, I understand that.
I wouldn't be surprised if an officer cited him. They may have found him at fault. I saw that coming when you said he was cited. I could tell right away he was going to be cited at the fault for failure to yield right away from that driveway. I can't believe he was cited because the officer didn't see it happen. So I will go back and see if I can find that report. Also, I'm curious what Austin told you about this...
I assume he was cited. I know that he had to pay for his part of the, it was like a partial fault, you know?
Yes.
The guy that had him was at fault, but if he hadn't have moved in front of him, then...
There were going to be mitigating circumstances, and then I wouldn't be surprised if this guy coming in the hill wasn't, we can get fault, but yes, they had indicated he was out. He had view to traffic, nevertheless. So just to put your mind at ease, I do have officers that patrol that area and sit at the bottom of the hill. I give the citations to city council monthly, so they witness several citations of Montague. We only put a stop sign, but Chelsea Little, our female officer, she sits at the bottom of the hill with the radar numerous times a week, maybe not a week, I should say, because she goes all over the city through traffic. We have cited people on that road for running the stop signs, and I'm not positive on speeding. I will have to look that up. We do have people doing enforcement at that location.
Can we locate one of the radar signs that is speeding on?
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, I'd really like to see that happen. And like I said, this is a really long street, you know, and I can't say what the length of it is.
I just think one sign's all you're in the...
In the middle, where do you put that sign? Because you got a stop sign in the middle, so you might want to be behind that stop.
Down, towards the bottom of the hill, because whenever the stop sign's there, the speed sign should pick it up two-thirds of the way down the hill.
Well, Mr. Box, you're recommending your yard, right? You're saying you're willing to have it in your front there.
I'm a little hard of hearing.
You're, you're saying you would like to have that radar sign near your property, right?
I would, I would pay to have a radar sign outside on the street.
You don't have to pay for it. You don't have to pay for anything. We just want to get it done. But it has to be in the right place, because if you put it where they're already slowing down for the stop sign, you're going to miss everything. But the idea is to encourage people to reduce their speed.
I'll do some research and figure out what's the best place to put this radar sign. If you want to put it up there, go. I mean, I have no problem.
It is really a bad area.
I like radar signs and speed bumps and everything else, so you can, whatever you want to do, move forward.
Well, we, we talked at the last meeting, Chief, I have highlighted in my minutes here, Ms. Cardosi said she would like to see some radar signs, let's see, where was this? Lon Walken. People are requesting radar signs on Emerson. I mean, I think we might need to purchase a few more of these.
Whatever you want to do is...
Do you need poles or, I'm looking into Fort Reagan, a mobile one. I'm looking into where they rented it or they bought it.
It makes it much more flexible and easier to...
Yes, the two we have are stolen. We have two, and we can move one from its location now and put it on Montague. As long as there's a pole, those are the other criteria.
And we also talked at the last meeting about striking it, because people do not hold their lane. When you get to the stop sign at the end of Montague, people are not holding their lane. I have almost been hit there many times. We need to have that area strike.
Well, the county's in the process of that and we signed up for several...
And will they be doing Montague?
They're supposed to be doing...
Yeah, it would have to be stationed halfway down that street, you know, where they're picking out their velocity before they hit the brakes. If I go out here and I drive past this building, it tells me I'm doing 17 miles an hour. That doesn't sound like we have a speeding problem around here. I don't know why you put a radar sign there. There are so many other places where you have people that are speeding.
That was, that was specifically put there so we could get a traffic count because we were involved in the grant that we have now, and that was to pick up how much traffic was there, because the county had old figures, and they weren't even close to the number of cars and trucks that was going down last year on Amsterdam. And that, that actually helped us get the grant. So we can move that one, or we have one other one that we're there on. Dixie?
Well, I will move it.
They are about 4,000 each, and then we pay $2,000 a year just for the, it's the maintenance of access, data access, so...
Well, you have to pay, you have to pay for the software and the maintenance, I understand.
Right, right. We already have that, so we'll, we'll look into taking care of that. And I appreciate that you came and you actually had resolutions in your hands.
Yeah. Well, I was, I know if you could find one that was mobile, then you wouldn't just have to use it on my street. Some of them come on dollies.
Right, that's what I was looking into now.
Yeah, and you must have other squeaky wheels in the community besides me talking about this problem.
Every, every street complaint.
So it's, it's a great statistical data gathering device, and you can, you know, plan your allocation of limited police resources accordingly. And so I'll leave it there. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to come back?
Sure.
But since birthday, I serve on the council, this has been an ongoing complaint. It is a significant...
It's a constant, yeah. Well, it's, and it's, and Montague is unique because it's so steep. It's very hard to hole 15 miles per hour.
And, and we're going to finish talking about that after our legislation.
Okay.
And this is number seven.
An order to the city council of the city of Parkville, Kentucky, amending Chapter 12, attendance and leave, section five, vacation leave, subsection C, break, leave the rule of the city of Parkville's personnel policies.
This is the second reading.
I'll make a motion in a second. Last time we talked about changing this, so I haven't seen any changes here, but we discussed giving it a little bit more regularity, I'm not sure if it's regular, but adding some more to it, so perhaps after five years of service for four weeks, we could have 10 years or five weeks, and then make 15 to six weeks. Is that what we discussed?
Yeah, it's in the minutes from last time, because we talked about how it was more consistent? One of those words. And I, using it as more of a retention strategy, that, you know, if I'm here five years, I work five, four years, I'm up to five weeks, I'll wait 15. It seems like a jump from five to 15, and then capping out at six weeks, so 15 years.
So I propose...
This is a 20, 20-year service for six weeks, so...
I understand. Yeah. We, we see that. I think the, I would like to...
So then, would you want to restate that? You want 10 years to, you know, how many weeks?
Five weeks.
And 15 for six weeks, not 20.
That's a fair question.
So actually, we are, what do you think of that? I would, I would like to propose an amended, an amended motion to change that.
I'll second that. Okay, so, Mr. Freilich?
Yes.
Do you think, excuse me, do you want, let Mr. Braun read what the corrections are?
Okay, so I understand that you was going to add between what we have, we think now, after, between the five years and the 15 minutes an hour. After 10 years of service, five weeks of vacation. Re-estate, after 15 weeks of service, you get six weeks of vacation and you'll wait until 20.
That's correct.
And we have a motion and a second.
Did we read the intro?
I read it actually.
Did you? Okay.
First and second, yeah, for discussion.
Okay, so, Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Ms. Sayers.
Yes.
Ms. Freilich.
Yes.
Ms. Score.
Yes.
Ms. Cardosi.
Yes.
Mr. Elkins.
Yes.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Next is the municipal order number 14.
Municipal order appointing Thomas Bradford as a sergeant of the city of Parkville Police Department.
It was recommended by our chief that we make this, Thomas Bradford our sergeant. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
I'm just curious, you know, if you can tell us a little bit more, does anything, any details about this appointment, his merits, what this means for the city?
We're going to be, someone's going to make a motion, recessive session, and we can discuss it at that time.
Oh, okay.
Because, pardon the question.
Okay.
So do we want to...
To delay the voting out there.
I guess, do we have to have executive session to talk about...
No, we can, I have my motion written down. It does not pertain to Mr. Bradford, but it might be relevant, just waiting.
Be mindful of the detailed information.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. I'm asking for executive session because it is a personnel matter, and I'm asking this person to KRS 61.811F.
I'll second that motion. Sixty-one, eighteen F.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for picking that up.
Okay, so we have a motion. Will you have a second by Mr. Claypool?
Yes, ma'am.
And will you roll call, Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Ms. Sayers.
Yes.
Ms. Freilich.
Yes.
Ms. Score.
Yes.
Ms. Cardosi.
Yes.
And Mr. Elkins.
Yes.
And we'll go back into municipal order 14.
I think we need to re-read it. We held it in a better, depending on executive session, that's concluded, so we need to...
Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Let me, may I ask...
Yeah, you said, yeah, please. I'll vote for discussion before you take a vote.
Yes. I just wanted to, I just like the formality of describing the role of the citizen, because I think it's helpful for us to hear, for everyone to hear.
So you're asking me to give the description of what his duties are going to be?
Yeah, just, you know, it just, what it means for the city.
So, so when your department starts to get to be certain adjutant supervisors, of course, I do most of the administrative duties. He is going to be in charge of patrol, criminal investigations, evidence, and he's going to handle all the basic, day-to-day operations for the officers and patrol. And if he has something he needs assistance with, or something I need to know about, he'll come to me. I have the final say in anything it does, so he just makes recommendations and then I can put him. But he is basically the patrol real commander, is the best way to put it.
Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Ms. Sayers.
Yes.
Ms. Freilich.
Yes.
Ms. Score.
Yes.
Ms. Cardosi.
Yes.
Mr. Elkins.
Yes.
Chief, you're up.
Everybody read my report? You writing questions? Besides the long... So, real quick, I know I did remember to put the traffic study on at this time, and I also, you got a copy of the tow law, try to give you a reason why they were towed, and then separate parking citations, so you have that. Also, I gave you the copy of the front of the reports, so you can have an idea what reports we're dealing with, instead of just giving you a description. You get a copy of citations. I talked to dispatch, the reason why I didn't get some of those monthly stats were they were changing the system, so they were unavailable. And on our stats, we got this month, there's several days missing, so if anybody happens to notice, you know, we were down missing three days. They didn't have the three or four days, and then would they give tally those stats with the others. Is there any questions?
Do you have a question? Okay. I just have some questions about, I kind of go back to the discussion earlier about speed, and I'm just wondering if we've had any progress on reviewing how we're using our traffic and speed data. I know that Mr. Elkins is going to work with you on that, and...
We just, we take, I take the data and I try to find areas where I think that we might be able to enforce it on the times, and that's why I've been sending officer rule out there and moving the movement of traffic. Now, we're going to discuss it in the next session, maybe, which I'm going to schedule here within a week.
And Steve and I have talked about the cushions, and we've had somebody getting these prices, yeah, it was...
The temporary ones?
Yeah, they're semi-temporary.
And they're pretty solid.
Right, but they're just like, they're different material, but they're like what we have, and we close down and we take them out. So they're not like permanent, and they're not something that just can block around as you drive over them. So that's... So she might just like to ask that we would be responsive to Mr. Box as soon as possible.
Oh, yeah, like I said, Officer Chelsea's been down there, she's done enforcement.
Let's get one of those... Let's get one of those, what's the proper name for the speeds on, what do you call it? What's its real name?
Radar sign.
Radar, yeah, so you did a radar sign.
Now, real quick on that, I don't think the portable ones are the way to go, either someone's stealing. I mean, it's as simple as that. Someone will try to steal it. If we need to pay someone to put a small pole on, if we do need a pole, that's great, but...
A pole?
Yeah, if they need a small one or something like that, yeah, something sturdy, permanent, and reliable. The portable ones are great, if you have some weight, but if you ever notice them on the road, they got chains and everything to them, and they're block fans.
I was just gonna say, that's, that's when I was gonna ask what right about theirs, because it was all chained down.
Yes.
To the string.
Now, if you wanna do that, find a way to chain it down, that's up to you. You don't decide what you wanna buy.
Well, I like the portable one in the sense that it's a lot more flexible for you. We can be responsive, you don't have to be linked to the pole, and...
Ours are portable, so Stan has to move them, because he's got the equipment, they're not easy hardly to do.
Not a problem, I have a tractor. We just drive around, out, move, go.
Well, you need like a helper, that you can't just do it like...
Oh, well, I'll set it up, I'll do it myself, but I gotta a helper, so. Wait, more happy together for whenever.
I think Mr. Resher just helped him, but we had to move them because of the poles being taken down.
Correct.
Yeah, so one just got... Do our radar signs, do they say, you know, do they flash and tell you that you're going over the speed limit, or like speed limit?
They kind of do, they have the... If you're doing under, it says thank you.
The numbers will flash, and in the second move apart, they have these strobes that will flash like police lights, if you start to speed. And they'll come on, and kind of gets your attention, because I understand the strobes.
Which one is on Dixie right now?
That's the...
That's the one, I think.
There's the number sign.
Because I, I had somebody ask me about it, they said, they told me you have a speed sign, but I don't really know, I didn't know if I was speeding or not, like, they seemed unclear about it, so maybe, I don't know.
Well, it's flashing, I mean, it probably was. That's a good guess.
Well, just in your northbound lanes, it doesn't track both lanes, so if they're speeding, it's out down, it's not gonna tell.
And there are some that will actually tell you to slow down also, depending on which lane you want to spin. Villahills has one on, Amsterdam, she's going towards, well, both ways, they'll tell you to slow down.
We can look into one. How are you, or is it like a digital slowdown thing?
It just says.
It says screen, okay. I like it screen. Because I'm just about to renew the data contract for, what, two or five years or whatever, it's like, it's about $2,000 a year.
I find it useful, I just don't...
I think we need at least one more, I really do, I mean, the speed is not getting better, it just seems like, well, it's a basic, you know, big hurry.
Well, and I noticed in the report that there were three accidents with a pedestrian struck, and I just wanted to, my question was, where were they struck?
I'm not familiar with a pedestrian struck, I don't remember if this is what dispatch put, so what dispatch does, is they take what they, so that's why you'll see a robbery report, and it's not a robbery. Someone was ahead, just got robbed, and dispatch puts what they say, then we get there and know someone stole something or whatever, or something like that. So that's why, and it stinks for statistical purposes when they start to do studies of the safest cities and things like that, because they go with what dispatch tells them, and unfortunately, we don't have as many problems as they may think.
Well, I still think it's important, like, I'd like to know how serious that was, and how that, like, because it's, you know, it's data, I mean, not to, not to make it just about, because it's not, but I just want to be clear that, you know, like, with the speed studies, all of the things that we're doing, like, it's also about how we're using it, and what we're doing, you know, what the intention is, because we have so many traffic calming issues, you know, things that are happening every day, and on maybe every road in our city.
Right, and I mean, obviously, some weather numbers.
Right.
So, to this end, Chief, what's your communication like with the Covington Police Department? Because a shared, rather like Montague, I mean, is that somewhere where they would maybe put one of their speed signs on the upside, that...
I can ask you.
I think it'd be great to do that.
And I'll see what they say.
Because it's not just the downside, the upside is crazy too.
And that's also, I wanted to ask, since our, the speed limit is 15 miles per hour, I was curious if that is set because it's parks?
The park.
And are all roads?
All roads in the park are 15.
Yeah, because I would venture to guess that that probably isn't a difference.
And I looked it up, that stop sign was put in in 2013, because of speeding, basically, so, and less speed comes right in there. So I would really appreciate you reaching out to Covington and saying if they would work with us on this.
Whoever she's meeting was there last week then. They'll be, they'll be receptive, it's all about manpower and whatnot, so I will see what they have.
It's worth it, man.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send that to you.
Chief, pardon me.
Capping up our hydro testing, we should go this week for the fall, and then also our business inspections, we'll be finishing those up as well. And the, we did get our new staff car in, in the back. All the equipment for it's gonna be ordered, so it's gonna be, it'll be a little bit of time before we get it serviced, and then I'll probably be coming, I guess, next month or whatever, and asking council to surplus the old 2002 that's in the back, so, but that's all I have.
And then I see you had a meeting with the Brent Spence project, I remember that.
I did, myself and Chief Stanley were, were there.
Fire in the, that's good. And that was for direction, like, roads around?
Just talking about emergency access, you know, how it's gonna affect our operation of getting there, in a way.
Because at the meeting I went to, they said they are not closing the bridge at any time for any of the, our old bridge, so it's gonna remain open at all times.
Yeah, this was mostly just for our, for getting access to the expressway for accidents. I really wasn't into the politics of the whole thing, so to speak.
This is five years of work?
Yes.
Well, it's good to get it. Thank you, Chair.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just out of curiosity, I think I'm with us, one of the hydrant tests?
Yes.
On Thursday or Friday last week, that was right here, Lawton and Amsterdam. Is that normally what it looks like?
Well, that's, was it, was it rusty water coming out of it?
It was just a lot.
Just a lot of water. So typically, when we do this, we do it for either float testing, or we'll do it for just flushing. This year, we're doing it for flushing, so we'll just turn it on and flow the water until it, it's, it's clear, and that helps water clarity, and helps us make sure the hydrant's working and all that, and helps out the water district as well, because they kind of do the same thing. But some of the hydrants, depending on where they are, are very, are very powerful, so just turning them on a little bit can be a whole bunch of water coming out of them. So that's probably, where was the address at, you said you saw?
It was the hydrant right here on Lawton, right at Amsterdam.
Yes.
And it's just a culmination of a lot of roads.
Yeah, that's a good, I mean, that's a, that's on a good main, so we get a decent amount of water out of that hydrant. So that's, that's probably what you saw, I'm sure. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Van?
Greetings, Mayor Zunbrook, members of council, thanks for another month. Happy to report that Joel and his crew from Queen City Blacktop got the curb and gutter work, got up on Cleveland, finished up, looks great. I tested it with the water, make sure it's going, we're exposed to it. They do still have to do some crack sealing up there, so that's why the cones are still in place. Eaton Asphalt has done some saw cutting on Scenic and Cecilia, and should be starting the curb and gutter repairs on Scenic soon, possibly 9:15. Payment done as well, or shortly after. They got some deep repairs up there, Danny to do, and then I'll mail it. We got the steps and some of the walk on Hawk and done, a bit more to go, but going to switch to paint striping while the weather is good slash great, not too hot, and the paint will be drying on the roller as we try to put it out, out there. With that being said, falls just around the corner, and then comes the leaves, still planning to do the leaf pickup service. Traffic counter on Lawton, the average is 250 cars per day, most was 311 on 8/28 to 25. I believe that was a Saturday night, Sunday morning. Anybody have any questions?
On the leaf pickup, I made notes on there, Dan, did you get it out, I forgot it, but...
Yes, ma'am.
Fifty for one pickup, ninety-five for two.
That works for me.
And we'll put that on the website, Julia.
I see you have the hayride and pumpkin parade.
I think I overstepped that, so, yeah, that's, that's top on my list, because some kids just never grow up, they just grow old. So I'm a big kid.
October 26th at 4:00.
Yes. Thank you very much.
The route gonna remain the same, because, you know, I gotta think of my costume.
Do I know?
The route's gonna remain the same.
Yes, ma'am. Where you gonna be there, where you gonna dress up as this year?
I'm not telling.
I'm not telling. I'm not telling. Cam, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Good evening, I'm on. Dan touched on the scenic project, that one is under construction, hopefully next four to six weeks, we'll have that one wrapped up. After the curb work, we'll be milling the pavement and then putting new down. The other project is the Dixie bus stop. We met with, with Councilman Elkins and Dan von Hendorf, and reviewed the, the plan that we had updated, from the prior meeting with the mayor there also, and also prepared cost estimates for the two options. One is a, is just the bus stop around the corner, we'll have to redo some of the curb work, there'll be maintenance of traffic for the contractor to build it, so we're estimating at about 21,500 to do that work, bidding it out, instead of being, it's like he is, doesn't feel comfortable doing that project. The other one is to continue that same project to go down to the first parking lot, down to the north or downhill on Dixie, and that one's a little more complicated, there's some things going on there. Right now, if we build that, the highway department's gonna want a curb to protect the pedestrians and to control drainage there, which then is gonna cause us to put in a catch basin. Dan looked at a pipe that is out there now, we're hoping to reuse that pipe, but in our estimate, we conservatively assume it is not in good shape, and we're gonna have to replace it. We'd recommend you in video that, confirm it's in decent shape, it is a concrete pipe, 15-inch.
Isn't that, isn't that in the next property though, that's not, that's not on the...
It's inside of the highway department right away, so...
Oh, okay, I thought it's in the next property.
Right, it's in the right way, and in our construction limits, so we're hoping to reuse that. So conservatively, the estimate includes we have to replace that, because we, we don't know the condition yet, so. The other challenging part about this project is the, the slope on hillside above the site. It's actually almost a one-to-one slope, which means typically, if a ground is three feet horizontal and goes up a foot, that slope, if you can imagine, anything steeper than that, we usually have a geotechnical engineer take a look from a stability standpoint to make sure that we're working on solid ground there. One of the worst things you wanna do is take a really steep slope, and this one's a one-to-one, so every foot horizontal you're going, you're coming up a foot, so you can imagine it's 45-degree angle basically.
Right, so we did talk about the five foot, and how much that might change, so we'll talk about it.
That helps a little bit, but, but the worst thing you could do then is undercut the bottom of a steep slope, you know, you're gonna create an unstable situation, which we don't want to do. So part of the estimate in that $190,000 is have a geotechnical engineer come in and do borings, soil borings, and give us a report to say what we can and can't do. So, and it also includes having a structural engineer from a different company design a wall that we anticipate we're gonna need, so.
So you heard that, you just mentioned with quote, $190,000. That's why we still have questions, we were just talking before the meeting, and some other options.
Right.
That's why we talked about the five foot, and how much...
I never, maybe we have all the details, we still have questions to find. Do the smart thing, because, well, one thing is not our burden, you know, it's like we do something to it, they can do whatever we want to, we can engineer a grab or whatever, so, well, I'm sure, we want something to be done, because it's safe, but we're just trying to be smart, so, still, still working on it.
Jay, could you just step back to the bus stop, I think I heard a number 28,000?
Twenty-one, 21,500.
Twenty-one?
Yes, yes.
And we don't need a retaining wall there, it's okay, the slope and everything?
Correct, that one's like, more straightforward.
Did I say something about Dan could do that job?
It sounds like he would prefer not to, based on the location, we would probably bid that to a contractor.
I understand that, I understand why, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that one we'll take, as you can imagine, with the traffic there...
Sure.
Traffic control work, we'll have flagmen probably, and cones, and you have, that's just an expense you have to add into that.
Is that a job that can still be done in the fall, or is that a...
Potentially, just depends on the workload of those kind of contractors.
So can I ask a question, so option one would be 21,500?
Correct.
Option two at the $190,000?
Correct.
Who left paying?
And it's a preliminary estimate, yeah, until we get more detail from a geotechnical engineer and a structural engineer, then we can refine that number, and the, if we get good results in the video of the pipe, that, that can save us some money, so.
Do we have any idea when council, this might come to council for review, I know savings?
Hopefully, hopefully, but it's not, yeah, that's my desire.
Because I know we really want to do this as soon as we can, so, cut ours.
Yes, we do.
So my request then is, do you want to perceive that the soil borings?
Well, that, if you read my email, I set up, we were looking at what it would reduce for the five foot, if you had six feet there.
Right.
Okay, so, that, and kind of narrow down, you know, what some of the other costs we could work on. I know you were gonna look into the borings and what we could save there. Well, I feel like these two projects need to be separate. They are separate. Yeah, because the bus stop, I think, I may be wrong, but I thought, we all agree that it's inadequate, as it is, it's a significant problem for people who are trying to use that, so, I guess I would like to see, proceed with the bus stop, I mean, is there debate on that, or?
No, everybody just debate on how to do it.
On how to, so there is still questions on how to do the bus stop?
Because both of these things are for the bus stop, they're not separate projects. It's all for the bus stop, right?
The second part is just a continuation of the bus stop.
Yeah.
So you're not continuing what? Is there any way to do it in two pieces? Is that what you're...
Yes, my point, yes, because I, I see an urgency to at least a safer platform for people to...
There definitely is.
Right, we could get to that point quicker than, than the second part, but the second part we gotta talk about. I understand that, I just, I'd like to see us move ahead first, probably.
Just gotta cut.
Maybe we can define what those parts are before any stuff. Right, yeah.
And, you know, Jay, is that something we could, could we split it into two different pieces, so that we could address the first part?
Certainly.
Right, that's simple.
The 190 included all of it. If you break it up into two, you probably will have a little bit of expenses that will duplicate, for example, the maintenance of traffic, you'll be doing that twice, having a contractor move in and out with equipment, mobilization, they call it, you'll have more of that.
The 191, do it include in the 21?
That, that included all the work at one time, but if you break it up, it could grow...
It was like two separate dollars.
Right.
So the 191...
But the one and one is the full thing.
Correct, including the bus stop.
Both things.
So if you break it up, it may grow a little bit. Yep.
Because you'd have to do the traffic setting.
The traffic, maintenance of traffic, maintain traffic, and that kind of construction[1704.02] The traffic, maintenance of traffic, maintain traffic and that kind of construction costs may go up a little bit.
Okay, we'll try to talk this week and get with you.
Okay. So you need guidance if you want to...
So we can bring it to the October meeting.
We can certainly proceed with just the...
We're running out of time to get it done before we...
Yep.
And I want more people together there on stage. That would be good too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly proceed with the first piece. Just need some guidance if you want me to authorize the geotechnical engineer to do the borings if you're...
Not till we talk.
That's fine. Just need that guidance to...
That was the email I had sent.
Yep. Okay.
Because I missed it. I'm really sorry. I don't know what happened. I was on the phone almost all that day with other things and I missed the meeting, which I tried to make. So I want to just clarify some things before we nail it down.
The other thing we would need to do is locate that fiber optic line. We have it located from mapping. The, what we would need is...
Is it under or over?
It is underground. So we would need...
Right next to it. And that's a big issue.
Right? So another significant problem could be if that is too shallow and it won't let us build. It would vertically be in our way. Right now, it's within our way horizontally. We know it's there, but we need to find out exactly where it is vertically. And they can expose it and we can shoot elevations to see how it'll work. And that could be very expensive if that is a problem.
They put them about two inches below. I know.
That may not work. So.
Would that issue pertain to the bus stop itself, just part one of this?
I think we need to have that piece that located up there also.
Okay.
Yep.
Regardless.
Yep.
Okay. So we have to invite them as well.
Okay.
I think it's all half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to just add, myself with the gateway development, the developer has moved some of their storage and fenced it off and it looks so much cleaner, really cleaned up. Sorry, I just started to go past.
Yeah, I asked Paul to be sure that happened because it was looking bad. So he told his guys to clean it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Financials? I'll have a chance to look at it later. Your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll sign it.
Selecting taxes, some taxes and more taxes. So we've been really busy with that. People coming in and lots of mail. So does anybody have any other questions on the report?
I did notice that the computer and records tech line for the police department, sorry. I'm going to have to go one day. But I just wondered if we needed to adjust our budget for that one.
Well, what happened was, this was a problem already in the last fiscal. And by the time we got the bill, it went into this one. So it wasn't adjusted because we didn't know they're going to wait to send us the bill.
That's so weird.
Yeah.
Are you pretty much done with that committee as far as anything else being added to your line on that?
I have no idea what else can go wrong.
Don't say that.
Seriously, what the problem is, every time we turn around, there's another issue that I'm...
Well, the one in the evidence room was already old. So that just kind of...
That was an accident. And they weren't supposed to update the computer and they did and it crashed. And then they had to find a new computer. So that was just an oversight mistake.
Right. Windows did all these updates. And so Matt K. A. Well is updating all our older stuff and, yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll just continue to monitor and if you need something more, we can take a switch to talk about. I was going to come in.
Mr. Clayfield?
Yes.
Ms. Sues?
Yes.
Ms. Sprowling?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Carter, yes, and Mr. Alford.
And before we do committee discussions, I just, I have a little piece of old business. I've had a few calls over all month long about it that was brought to my attention. And I just want to put it out there, address the driveway situation. There's people that ask for it to widen their driveway. These are PBS things. And so I let them know that for any permitting, that's a PBS requirement. But as far as a curb cut, as long as your driveway's ten foot and you want to widen it to another ten foot, that is another, you know, you could do that to twenty feet. So anybody else that comes in and they, if it's just an encroachment permit from the city, then if they have twenty-foot curb cut already, then they can go behind the right of way and widen their drive back there. So I just want to put that out with, you know, I just usually send them to PBS for anything, but just so people know. And I thought we just put it on air so everybody's kind of aware. And then another thing was at the bottom of Amsterdam and Montague, where they meet with Lewis Street, Amsterdam meets with Lewis Street, there's a concern that people are crossing into oncoming traffic. And I've reached out to the county and the Covington about putting some center lines there. And I know we're going to have some striping done and the county's doing some striping. And they've asked them to participate in some better signage and striping there on the ground. And he did lay out one that he presented to them that they should do is, you know, to make sure they stay to the right of that coming up and that there is a right turn to go to this part of Lewis Street to keep them on the other side of the island. Because they go around the island and come back out and find, oh, that's one way. So I've asked for better linings there.
Thank you, Candy. I think it is a really significant safety issue.
It is, it's awful. Yeah, it's, I've seen it many times. So I talked to the county and talked to Covington and I think maybe we'll get it worked out.
It would be so nice to have like a new arrangement there.
Yes. The line, there's no line. So people just go.
It's like such a test of...
When I come down Montague, I'm worried about crossing even because there was flying up there and cutting in front of me. They have no stop sign on the one. Anyway.
Is that something that could be fixed?
Without work ethic.
Or you have cedars?
That's a good question. It's county.
Yes, and these different...
I mean, dare I say, I feel like, is this be a roundabout? Some different arrangement because if you aren't from this area directly, you don't know what's going on.
Oh, yes, like.
Well, there's a lot of people using there who are from trees pavilions who are not from this area and they are confused. So.
And when we move on to committee discussions.
Did you want to cover old business entirely now before?
No, that's, that's...
Can we come back to it?
Okay. Committee reports?
We have a first committee and we discussed the following, the preparation for spring, all of our preserve plans, which continue to be the rehabilitation of the property and reforesting of it. We are exploring branch opportunities and cost, location, citing for a possible mandatory facility in Charlie Park. That is a substantial project and that will take a lot of research, but we have begun that. I will mention that there was a sprinkler repair that happened this week. One of our sprinklers went, you know, like a guy sort of crazy. And so I met Roland, Dan, down at the park. And one thing we observed is that our irrigation system, when it was put in, it was great. But the trees totally overgrown it. So many of those sprinkling heads really are not helping us because they're trapped under trees. So when we reactivate the system in the spring, maybe we'll look at bringing this forward, you know, in front of the trees again. And we did discover that one of the units, and I talked to Dan about it, no longer had power to it. I think a bad GFI by the upper trolley building. And we also talked in our meeting about preparations for our centennial, which I think I mentioned before included doing top pointing and repairs on our trolley buildings and the stone walls at the entry point and, you know, some of our historic structures. I did know while I was down there with the sprinkler person that we have a plexiglass over that stained glass window. It's a really beautiful window. And that plexiglass tends to, it's really yellowed. And I would like us maybe to replace that with a, you know, so you can appreciate the colors of those stained glass again. I don't think that's going to be a big cost, but I think it'll be a good thing to do. Dan, is that something you can do or...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We had an economic development business committee meeting as well. Noah joined us for his first meeting. It was great. He and Laura have been working on, I think we're calling it something different, like an economic development package for known existing businesses in the city as an attraction tool. They've done a ton of research. Do you have any want to talk about?
Well, mostly it focused on the side of buildings and perhaps matching kind of funds with a business to improve their lighting, their landscaping, just overall over there. Didn't include roofing, windows, but just overall improve the aesthetic quality of the business.
We had a lot of back and forth on that about what makes the most sense for a city of our size. You know, we... All of the packages that we looked at at different cities are very different, obviously, you know, in terms of the needs of that city. So we were trying to figure out what works best for us. So that's still a work in progress. We also talked about the road diet project, which we presented a couple of months ago. That was brought back up by some of our long-term committee members as well as one of our new members. Both our new members were very interested in that. So we had a pretty heavy discussion in that area to get more information about the idea. It's such a long-term plan. I mean, this is something that, you know, we may not, like we were talking about the bread spents in five years. This might be thirty years that we like see the effects of something like this. So just reviving that discussion and updating our committee members on, on that project and getting them all of that information. I know I may say something.
Well, I think we want to bring that topic to the next caucus meeting.
Yeah. And I already emailed about that.
And connect it to, you know, some studies that have been done in the past so that we can sort of follow up and continue the conversation.
Right. Because some of those studies, some of the stuff is happening, some hasn't. But it's, they're twenty years old, fifteen years old. So, yeah, they have some longevity, talking about thirty years. They have a little time on them.
Yeah, because it takes, I mean, you know, you do it and you might not see, you know, it's a long, it's a long game. So, yeah, we want to revive that discussion, hoping to bring that up at our caucus meeting and, yeah, I think that's all we have.
Do we need to discuss resignation?
Oh, yeah, that's good. But we did have one of our committee members resign, Marty Boyer.
Oh, did Marty resign?
He did. For, he said we could share.
He did?
Yeah. For many reasons, mainly he was, you know, searching for, you know, the direction of this, what we were trying to achieve. I think Marty's done a lot of really great work in a lot of various areas across this committee over several years, but he's having, I think, he unsure about the direction of important purpose that this committee is meant to serve. He articulated it much better in his email, which I would have printed it out to read it directly, but he made great points.
I just want to publicly thank him for his very talented person and always very kind.
That's a big loss. It's a big loss. He was very committed and he did a lot of really important work.
Well, I know he's, I know, I've talked to him, I don't know, several months ago. He was doing a really long hike, I think maybe in California too. Yeah, so he's got stuff going on.
Well, I think he also, while he is resigning from this committee, I don't think that means he is stepping away from some of his other interests. So I think he's going to continue some conversations about communication with us.
Yeah, that's really interesting.
And, because this is really important to, you know, he and I kind of came up through that experience together when we helped rebuild the website several years ago. And I think he wants to see, you know, wants to see that, you know, come back into compliance in some accessibility ways. He has some really serious, like...
Yeah, him and I talked about it, you know, on an email. So.
And a lot of our conversations in economic development, we always tend to come back to communications in almost every conversation. And it's, I think that's for a reason because I think there's a lot of opportunity in that space. So that's, that was a piece of Marty's resignation as well, is that needing to be a focus going forward. I agree.
Emily, one thing that I think is, you know, when I look at our city and I look at, well, what's really changed in our city that would impact economic development that might change the course of... And I look at the new projects, Tapestry Bridge, The Views, Hart Point on that end. And there's stuff going on on the other end too, certainly with what Notre Dame is unfolding there. And so how do you see that changing the course of development here? I mean, I, I see it as a lot more population density and I would think there's opportunity in that.
Always more opportunity with the population density, especially as it relates to like things that people keep bringing up. Like we talk about car counts in restaurants and attracting businesses to here. And, you know, businesses would require people to be patrons to them. I think, not unlike the road diet, I think it's a long game. I think it's great, especially the new development of Sisters of Notre Dame. I think that will make a difference. But at the same time, I think looking at something like the road diet is going to be really important because it still doesn't solve for a lot of the issues of parking.
Parking is a real issue. And I do think we need to give that real thought because we have a narrow corridor here and there are cliffs behind everything. And that poses challenges.
It is. So I'm hoping to get into that a little bit more hopefully this month and maybe talk some more about it.
Okay. And I think we also sort of put a pin in the town hall.
Yeah.
Because we're, you know, looking at that as more of a community development sort of conversation potentially. We're not totally certain about that, but just so if anybody was, you know, waiting for that one.
I think there's a lot of activity. I agree. I think Sarah's absolutely right. That's definitely a community development push. But I think it's something that I would like us to not forget about. I think there's an appetite for that. I think it's a really great way for people to engage. Obviously, these meetings are public. Anybody can come to these things. But I think that's more of an informal setting where people can come and interact with each other and talk about the things that are important to them, obviously with a targeted focus. But I would, I don't want to forget about that because I think it is important and it was really successful as one that we did.
And if we can, if we do go ahead with like a community organizations theme, it might actually be better serving for us if it's at the beginning of the year or something of that nature because, you know, we're getting ready for all the future events coming up and things of that nature.
Yep.
Okay. And to finish up old business, I'm going to have Mr. Brown address some things on tax.
I don't know what the issue is, first of all, for me to address it. So I think Sarah has some concerns. Is that right?
Oh, I had a question that I emailed about. I actually asked about it in our, in our last special meeting because it was about the way that our tax rate ordinance was written. And it included an ordinance number six from, I'm sorry, that's not correct. Ordinance number six from two thousand four in the line. And so I asked about it during the meeting to ask, you know, just inquire if that needed to be updated. And at the time, we weren't entirely sure. And it didn't change when we voted upon it. But it turns out, if you go back and look, and I brought it to the mayor's attention, Julie's attention, that it really did need to be updated to the ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-four. And so I know that that has been updated on the website already. But I, I just want to emphasize that when we change something in ordinance, I think council needs to be aware of that. And, you know, obviously, I don't think anybody's going to dispute this change, but I just think, you know, that's just good practice.
Right. Well, at that meeting, Mr. Brown wasn't here. So he took care of it after we...
Right. But even when I brought it to your attention, it didn't seem like it had been addressed. And I asked for clarification and I didn't get that until yesterday. And I was just told, it's been updated on the website already. And I just think the rest of council, all of us, would like to be informed whenever an ordinance is changed after we voted on it.
Okay. We can do that. Julie had it done like right up. I had, Mr. Brown.
Making council aware, it's different than having to re-vote or recall the issue. I didn't prepare it, so I didn't catch the initial mistake. It was brought to my attention after the fact. I went and checked to be sure that you were right about the new ordinance number. Told Julie just to insert it because it's more like a Schrader's error than anything else. We didn't change any context of the ordinance. We didn't do anything else to it other than to correct a mistake. And that's what we did. That's perfectly valid and legal to do. Your point is if you want to notify, that's outside my realm.
That's lovely, by the way.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I just think it's important to be notified. I mean, a simple email would be fine. It doesn't have to.
I'll make a note.
I have one other piece.
Julie takes care of a lot of things and I just...
Of course.
I just get about them sometimes. So.
We cannot thank Julie enough for all that she does for us. Can I have, can I talk about one more thing?
We're in old business.
Yeah. I just wanted to also re-address municipal order number thirteen from our last business meeting. Because during that meeting, and this, this is why I asked for some of those changes in the minutes. We had, sort of, we had stated that this was a renewal. And in fact, it was not. This is something brand new. And this is regarding...
Emergency management?
That's right. So it's called the Kentucky Emergency Management Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement. And again, I, I think we probably would have approved it no matter what. But I think it was important to note that this is something that's brand new. It is not a renewal. And I want to make sure.
I was told it was a renewal. And later I was told that it was something added to what we already have established.
Okay.
So that's, it was after the fact. So that's, it was after the fact. So my understanding from their initial, when I first got it to bring to council, that it was a renewal and a standard. And then when I was at a mayor's meeting and they all were talking about it and it came up at another city's meeting, the same thing, because they were told that it was a renewal, but it was, there was added stuff to our present contract with them.
According to an article in Lincoln KY, this was something that the, that had been worked on since 2020. This was according to the League of, Kentucky League of Cities. And I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that it was new because.
I know you suggested you want to change your vote.
No, but I want.
Okay, Mr. Ken, it sounds like you're right.
Well, problem with that, Sarah, is.
To the public.
Lincoln Kys don't always, they don't always have the facts.
I understand that.
And I disputed him at the mayor's meeting about what he had told me that he got from independents and I said, well, this is what I got as well. So there was an argument to be had right there at that time. I'm just saying, we have a contract from '22 and this was, I was told it was to renew and this was actually in addition to that contract.
Okay.
And I can send all of council, I can send all of council what was done in '22 and then you have what the addition is.
And I found myself going back to all of our previous legislation because I did feel like, gosh, this feels a little bit different from what we've seen before and I didn't find something indicative of this same language. So I do think that there is something new here, you know, it sounds like other cities had a, had a resolution instead of municipal order, you know, and just, I just think, you know, I just want clarity. In the past, when we've had things come to us that came sort of via the mayor's group meeting or from KLC, it has come to us as a resolution and I've had to clarify some of those.
Well, I clarified that with our attorney and he likes to minister.
There is a technical distinction between a resolution and an order. In this case, you are authorizing the mayor to execute a document that has to come by order, not a resolution. That's the reason I always phrase it as an order. Resolution gets kicked around all the different cities and governmental entities and don't use it properly in my mind. Resolutions are feel-good measures, they're not directing something to occur. It's been my past understanding that we've always had emergency management plans throughout the various cities throughout from the Kentucky and they get updated on occasions and I think this is all of this. The language may be different, but it's more of an update than it is a brand new document, so it's kind of a renewal, so I don't think using the term that we used had any significance.
So mayor, if you can send us that 2022 previous version, that would be great.
And if you don't have any other new business, I have a motion to adjourn.
So.
I'll sign it. Thank you.